I'd like to call our meeting to order. First item is the invocation led by Pastor Wendy Swanson.
Please join with me in prayer. Gracious and loving God, thank you for the day you have given us. It's been a long day and there is work still to be done. Gracious God, I ask that you would send your spirit here among all who are here, that discussions would be open, discussions would be for the good of our town, and that would lift up each person here and the town as a whole. Guide us, strengthen us, and be with us through all our endeavors. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The pledge will be led by Marty Grossman.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Diane, if we can do the roll.
Mayor Skug is absent this evening. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
And Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
We have a quorum, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the first item is the scheduled announcements and presentations. Marty, Chamber of Commerce, you're up, please.
Welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. It's my pleasure to share with you that tonight, the 39th Annual Prescott Valley Days Celebration begins with the carnival that opened at 5:00. I have a brochure that I've shared with all of you of the wonderful events that'll be going on all weekend long. But with the carnival in tonight and then tomorrow night, we start with our Fiesta del Pueblo, and it's our Fiesta night with a Fiesta buffet dinner. We'll be having folkloric dancers and then dance music to Frontera Norte Band. Big fun Fiesta evening along with the Matchstick Rush Fire Show that'll be happening at 9:00 and then more dancing after that for the whole evening. The next morning, on Saturday, the 13th, the annual parade begins, sponsored and hosted and presented by the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club.
Roar.
Roar. Yes, starting at 9:00. We have over 55 entries now at this point. Two more came in as I was leaving the office, so I have to get back and start writing those announcements up. But that's at 9:00. Immediately following the parade is a Pancake Breakfast New this year that we'll be hosting. Actually, the food area will be just to the south of the Fountain, north of the Fountain area in the Entertainment District in kind of that little open field area. Fortunately, we have great catering in town that's working with the Chamber and sponsoring and hosting so that we're putting on a wonderful, different food items going on. So the Fiesta buffet is Friday night, and then a Pancake Breakfast, pancakes and bacon, right after the parade over in the same location. We have open-air vendors that'll be there. And also, the carnival opens at 11:00 on Saturday. And then we'll have youth performances. A lot of our local youth that participate in our Parks and Recreation programs will be performing between 12:00 and 3:00. Along with this going on, and we balanced it, Salute to Heroes is also be happening over at the Prescott Valley Event Center. So a lot of things that when we end something over here at the Entertainment District, they will be having something going on over in the parking lot with Salute to Heroes. So we work together to kind of have something going on at all the time. So after the youth performances, then going on over at Salute to Heroes, they have the Monster Truck Show. Tickets are available at the Prescott Valley Event Center. Once that's over, come back over here to Saturday night's activities. And it's our Western night, and we'll have a Western barbecue buffet dinner available along with music from Danny Romero and the Arizona Territory. Again, dance music. Beer Garden will be open and a lot of fun and activities. Again, the Matchstick Rush Fire Show will go on the second night. They are so popular. I mean, it's just, people clamor and ask for them, so we're really excited they're coming back. They'll do a second show on Saturday night. Again, music following that, and we'll have more, just more of a fun evening going on. And that will conclude later on that evening on Saturday. And then Sunday night, Sunday the carnival opens at noon, which I know is Mother's Day, so we figure one of the best things, I don't know about some mothers, but get rid of the kids to the carnival and then you have some free, you know, mental space-time, you know? So anyway, but the carnival will be going on. And so that will conclude the, really, the planned activities. But we have these, we will have a booth at the event. The Chamber will, will be having all of the activities going on. The brochure is available and there for any information starting tomorrow afternoon. So we just wanted to share all of the wonderful activities going on this weekend with the 39th Annual Prescott Valley Days along with the parade Salute to Heroes activities going on at the Prescott Valley Event Center. Something for everyone going on, nonstop until Sunday. Any questions? I gave you all one of these, and we have more at the Chamber, and I will share them with those in the audience.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you this weekend. We'll see you all at the parade.
We'll be there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Okay, and next we have the Yavapai Humane Society with their new executive director, Jocelyn Bouchard. Welcome, Jocelyn.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for inviting me. It's my pleasure to be here to talk to you this evening. I really just wanted to come and introduce myself. My name is Jocelyn Bouchard. I've been with the Yavapai Humane Society for about four months now, and it's my pleasure to join this fine organization and to be partners with you all as well in Prescott Valley with animal control functions and providing the shelter for strays and abandoned animals. So wanted to have this opportunity to come and introduce myself and invite you all to come out, or I'm happy to meet with you. If you have questions, want to learn more about the work that we do, the partnership that we have, I would be absolutely honored to meet and talk with you or have you over to the Humane Society. One of our four locations, we have several things going on. We have the main shelter, we have the thrift store, we have a public spay-neuter clinic, and as of June last year, we have an equine center out in Chino Valley. So if you're not up on what's going on at the Humane Society, I'd love to meet and tell you all about it. We also have another invitation I'd like to extend is not this weekend, but next, we have our Annual Walk for the Animals. It's happening out at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. Now, I know that Prescott Valley has the Battle of the Bands that day, but that starts right around when our event finishes, so you could potentially do both. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Jody?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jocelyn, so glad to have you here in the community.
Thank you.
What's one of the initiatives that you're looking forward to putting in place as you get your arms around everything?
Yeah, you know, we got a lot of things going on, but I'm really big about partnerships and partnering with the community and finding, you know, pets are a thread that runs through all of our lives. And so there's so many opportunities to partner, whether it's with businesses or other nonprofits. I would love to see more of that happening so we can all work together to support the valuable services that we provide. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jody. That's a great question. Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you for being here, Jocelyn. Okay, comments and communications. Does anyone on the council have any comments besides Marty? In that case, Marty is first.
Okay, as Marty said, this coming weekend is a very busy weekend. And besides Prescott Valley Days, we have, as Marty mentioned, the Salute to Heroes. We are going to have the Monster Truck Show Saturday afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Event Center, and I am the fortunate person to be the emcee for that event. Usually, I'm in the background running the floor. This year, I'm going to be out front, talking over everybody. And it's going to be a lot of fun. Adults are $20; children up to age 11 are $8. It's a great family event. Plus, we're going to have all the first responders out in the parking lot. So we're going to have all the different law enforcement, search and rescue, fire, police, canine. I mean, they're all going to be out there. Again, it's a great, there's also going to be a custom car show out there, and there are going to be some food vendors. And going back and forth between the Entertainment District and the Event Center is going to be a lot of fun for everybody. And I also want to mention that next week, we have the home show. And for those of you out there who want to, who have questions for people from the town, from the different departments and of the town council, the town is going to have a booth there and will be there to answer any and all of your questions. If we can't answer it immediately, we will definitely take the information down and have somebody get back to you. So come on out, ask the questions, have a good time, and enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. A, approving the April 27, 2017 council minutes, approving accounts payable, approving the April 14, 2017 Board Selection Committee minutes. B, approving Resolution Number 1995, abandoning certain public utility easements no longer needed for public use in Granville Unit 7C3 and 7D1, tract 7DA. E, authorizing the library to transfer funds in the amount of $15,000 from the library's administration fund line to capital equipment to purchase new automated sorter bins. F, approving an amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement in the amount, in an amount not to exceed $15,000 in fiscal year '16-'17 budget transfer from Capital Projects Coordinator position under executive management to Public Works Professional Services Engineering account for subdivision construction oversight services. G, approving budget transfer from contingency funds in the amount of $4,030 to the Police Administration Operating Legal Services Line item. H, approving the Statement of Work Agreement with IBM for Prescott Valley Participation in the Cop Link Program for FY 1718. I, approving a special event liquor license for Bill Williams Mountain Men Club Annual Steak Fry Fundraiser at Little Dealer Little Prices RV Dealership at 2757 True Wood Drive on June 3, 2017. Does anyone wish to pull an item? Or do we get a motion to approve it? The whole.
Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda by electronic vote.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
How do you wish to vote, Councilmember Mallory? Vice Mayor, that's unanimous for passage.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, moving along to new business. Item A, consideration of appointing Donna Keller to the Personnel Board as a citizen alternate member to a term with a renewal date of April 25, 2018. Lorley? Yes, ma'am.
Come on up, Donna. The vacancy was advertised and one application was received. Vice Mayor Rick Anderson and Councilwoman Mary Mallory and myself conducted the interview and are recommending the appointment of Donna Keller to fill the vacancy made by Paul Allen Hall's departure with a term renewal date of April 25, 2018. And Donna has served us faithfully in volunteer position before, even on this board, right? Is my memory intact?
Yes.
Well, get closer to the mic and tell us why you're willing to serve again.
Well, I want to serve the town to start with and be involved in the town. Personnel Board is good because I'm educated in personnel, though I've never worked in it, been a supervisor, but that's it. And it's a good way to see that everything is fair and equal and understandable in the Personnel Manual. And the board can easily review that and understand it.
Well, we humbly thank you and very much appreciate your willingness once you came back into, you couldn't stay away, by the way. I have to say that.
I moved away for three years.
Mary, did you have any comments?
No, I'm fine.
Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Donna Keller to the Personnel Board for a renewal date of April, to a renewal date, sorry, April 25.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Diane, can you set the vote, please?
That's unanimous, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Welcome, and thank you for serving.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, Donna.
Okay, item B, consideration of approving the construction contract with CLM Earthmovers for construction of the Victorian Estates Waterline Project, CIP Number W391
I apologize, we're having some technical difficulties on the slideshow, but I'll just move forward.
We never have any of those.
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, today I'm presenting the town staff's recommendation for approving the construction contract for the Victorian Estates Waterline Project. I know that all of you are very familiar with this project. We've discussed it with you on several occasions. Just a quick summary, it's approximately 2,900 feet of new 12-inch water line that will be replacing an old 8-inch water line that runs just south of Highway 69 from Crossroads to Diamond Valley. We received four bids on May 1st. CLM Earthmovers were the low bidder at $432,954.75. So we have the funds available for this project, although it's split between two fiscal years. So we are going to try to get as much pipe in the ground this fiscal year as we can. I know the screen isn't very clear, but we'll be beginning in the portion of the project that's actually outside of the A dot right of way, so we should be able to hopefully get at least half of the pipe in the ground this fiscal year. So we shouldn't have any issues for fully funding this project. We've reviewed all the bid documents, and everything is in order with CLM's bid package, so the town is recommending that we award the contract to CLM Earthmovers.
Questions, Lorley?
None. We need to do it.
Anyone?
I don't have any questions. We talked about this.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the construction contract with CLM Earthmovers for construction of Victorian Estates Waterline Project, CIP W391 in the amount of $432,954. And I just love the 75 cents.
Don't forget that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Diane, can you set the vote, please?
That's unanimous, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you very much. Okay, item C, consideration of approving Change Order Number Three to the construction contract in an amount of up to $113,000 and a budget transfer in the amount of $500,000 for the Glassford Hill Road and Long Look Drive Intersection Improvement Project, CIP Number S379.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. The item you do have before you is related to the Glassford Hill Road project. Council may be familiar, this project is going very well, and you can see the exhibit, you've seen this before of the, basically the doubling of the widening of the capacity of the lanes out there at Long Look-Glassford intersection. Just a little side note, the existing project going on right now, you've seen all the activity at the four corners. Lots of utility work in there. The unique thing about this job, you see lots of different people there. That's because we have up to eight different utilities in there, and some of them have dual facilities. So we have as many as 12 different utility interests in that little intersection project. But to report the project's going well, we met with the school, actually, this week, and I went to the school board meeting, and they praised the progress and were looking forward to the improvement. So things are going along well for a difficult project. Let me get to what we found out as we proceeded along with this project was anytime you scope a project, you are limited by budget, and you have to cut your scope to where the improvements need to match. What I'm really pointing to is the fringes are always difficult to get those to match in design. So we proceeded through with the design, had a good match, as you can see here at Lone Cactus with Glassford in the lower, left-hand corner there. What we found out was the match went very well, but we also hired David and Associates, who did the design of the Glassford intersection, Long Look, in addition to a community development block grant. He started looking at the proposed sidewalk that we'd like to do through a grant opportunity and found out that we've got a lot of existing constraints out there. What am I talking about? Existing homes that were lower than the road and then the existing roadway widening, you actually collide in the middle. And what that means is, the old subdivision there and new Glassford Hill Road, that little short stub between Lone Cactus and Glassford, it's short, it's fat, and there's not much room to work. We have trouble getting the roadway grades to work. So what Gordon really, he went to work and said, "Okay, we really can't have those existing four houses suffer between Lone Cactus and Kachina." So Gordon went to work on the design, being the crackerjack engineer he was, to say, "We need to make this work to make sure that if we do get the grant or as we continue to extend Long Look to the east in the future, that we're not taking out existing improvements." So Gordon went to work and worked really hard to figure out that he, we could actually do some roadway redesign and more excavation in addition to the existing contract. The beauty is earth resources have a great working relationship with them, that the existing unit items that were competitively bid, we can use those. So it is extra work, but it's that competitively bid unit items. So in short, that little section between Kachina and Lone Cactus, in order to get it to match and not look bad in the future, or actually take out existing improvements interim condition, it's our recommendation to staff that we spend the additional money at this point in time in order to get this particular project to match for future improvements. Where the visibility could be difficult is if we didn't do it, then this particular section would have to be taken out, and it'd be a shame. When you got to get things to match, lane widening's choking them back in, the fringes are always difficult. We've looked long and hard at this. As I mentioned, Gordon did a very good job to figure out the best way to make this work. And the end result is, we can add to the existing contract and make this work, and we're that much further in the future to this particular endeavor if, as we continue to improve Long Look to match the viewpoint in the middle. So we have that one section of three streets that we're trying to get to match. So that's the change order you have before you. Did want to add with council that we got the title sheet from Gordon, we needed a design, and he put Elm Street on it, which was his little, I guess, dedication to sanity of Nightmare on Elm Street. This is a difficult design in this little area, so. But we're happy with the design he had, and that's the change order for your consideration. The second subpart of this particular item I wanted to bring to council, as I mentioned, construction's going very well, lots of good cooperation, very good contract and earth resources, coordinating everything and finding room to work and keeping this project on progress. What we did find, of course, a year and a half ago, when we scoped this project, we had it budgeted in two budget years, basically cutting it in half. What we're finding now that we're getting closer, people are working, is basically we're going to be done with about 75% of the project before June 30th, this budget year. So we want to keep, obviously, the contractor's progress going and make sure that we can pay him for his progress. So what we're doing is basically getting advanced on our allowance here and taking capacity we have this year out of a different project that's going to be bid next year and using that capacity in the budget in order to pay the contractor for his progress, which, of course, our whole goal the whole time is to be actually done with the project by the time school starts, basically, around August 1st. So really what that is, is an advance on the allowance and be able to pay the contractor with budget capacity we have this year, and no expansion capability, or just be able to pay the contractor. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this item.
Laura?
Normally, Norman, when it said Change Order Number Three, I'd get cranky. But the town manager had explained it to me before the meeting, and you explained it very well. But do we think we're at the end of change order? But, do we think we're at the end of change orders?
We'd always like to think so.
Or is this project?
Just read it, why is it number three? The first one was actually awarded at the original bid, it was an additive alternate for Yavapai College. So, a change order meant, we didn't want to make sure that the... We bid the project and needed Yavapai College to say yes, so that was change order number one, which is easily an addition that council approved. Had a little small one come up with some of the dirt placement on that northeast corner, that was signed internally, just to make sure that we met some of that. This one, yes, it's extra scope. Would we like to think we're already there? We have a lot of the roadway underground, which is where some of those unforeseen conditions can come about. So, like I think, as always, yes, we've got some good unit items, and I'm really happy with the progress so far.
You understand that all your prior success precede you, and you've been so wonderful about there not being change orders. And so, I just wanted to make sure I understood and that any citizens understood why we were increasing the costs.
Yeah, and it is, it's a good decision to make at this point of where we think we're going, and what would really, as I tried to point out, the visibility would be more difficult if we just flat didn't have the money and say, "Well, we had to take out new improvements, got the grant, or in a couple of years, we continue to grow." That's really what we really like to make sure of, that visibility, is we never take a step back or take out new improvements. And that's just always tough meshing up the fringes, as I mentioned.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say that I think it's good that, you know, we see this now, and we take care of it now, instead of, you know, a few years down the road, then we got to go back, tear things up, going to cost more money. You know, I like the fact that we're being aggressive in getting ahead of the situation and the traffic, because I know you guys are out there working really hard, and you do see that traffic, and it's going to only increase, so, yeah, thank you.
Mike?
I just want to make a comment as well. I think what you're telling us is pretty much common sense that we do these things now. I think we would always have this criticism if we had some sort of a change in a couple of years that were ripping up to something that we put in several years before. So, it has to be done. Timing, I think I can understand as well, because we want to get this done before, between the time school, high school gets out, and then when they come back in August. And change orders, you know, I think those are unforeseen. You know, I think if we had a crystal ball, we'd be in good shape, but we don't, so that's why they call it change orders, to try and anticipate things that we may not have originally considered, and/or circumstances, as you're telling us now, that rather than tearing out things, it's better to do it a little more sensibly. So, I think I can appreciate that and look forward to the completion before school, high school starts again.
Okay, Marty?
Yeah, years ago, many years ago, when I was in retail, there was a favorite expression that I had hanging over my desk, and it said, "How come there's never enough time to do it right the first time, but there's always enough time to do it again and do it over?" So, I'm glad that you are bypassing that need and getting it done the first time. I also know how important it is to maintain the momentum of a project. Had we had them stop and then wait until next year, depending on what kind of a summer and winter we have, between rain and other aspects of the conditions, it would change drastically, and we would have another change order to correct something that happened while everything was open and exposed. So, I'm glad that we were financially able to take care of this, you know, even if it is an advance on next year's budget, and that you're on top of it, and we're able to do this. And I'm anxiously looking forward to seeing the end of it, because I just love driving down Glassford Hill when nobody's working, and the speed limit gets down to 25, and I go, "But there's nothing in the way!", you know, so... And I'm hearing that from other people, too. But, when it's done, everyone's going to be extremely happy, and I think we're all going to be pleased, very pleased, you know, of the quality of the work and the way it was done. So, thank you for what you're doing and staying on top of it, and it's great to see everybody working together.
Jody?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Norm, would you refresh me, was this leg here in front of the houses on the north side of Long Look originally in the scope?
Just, what we tried to do was cut the scope to match at Lone Cactus, so as you can see, we were trying to match the existing pavement. And that's when we found out, when you widened the road and did more design, when we looked further. So, I guess to answer your question, no, it really wasn't to look at this edge, we just tried to match as quick as we could back in. And always, you can have an interim condition, but as I said, the competing interest of what we didn't want was the houses to suffer in the future, and that's really what we got to do, really, is being most responsible in the design.
I agree with you. I would not want our homeowners to suffer in the future either. However, I agree with Councilmember Nye, when it goes to a third change order, that's where there's a red flag on my end. I appreciate our relationship with our firm as well. I think that, though, for the future, looking at our scoping process would be warranted. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Vice Mayor, if I could comment about, Councilman, we did get to comment a lot, "Why do you have the reduced speed limit?", get that a lot, so I'd like to answer it, you know, here. There's a very good reason for that, is when you reduce the speed limit, what you don't want to do, people get conditioned when they're driving. Lots of traffic on Glassford Hill Road, what we want to make sure is we get that safe during the day. So, what you don't want to do is take down the signs at night, and then, you know, if they're not working Saturday, sign that you're back up to the speed, it's like, "What day is it?", and we have enough trouble with people not paying attention to the road with cell phones. So, yes, we want to make sure we keep that a consistent condition out there while the construction is down to reduce that speed. In fact, we had, you know, today, we've, you know, with some time of the tight quarters, we want to always make sure we're safe. So, that reduction of speed limit, we don't want to raise it and lower it all the time.
I totally understand that, I was just messing with you a little bit.
That's okay, too.
Anything else? I think that's it, Norm.
Very good.
Okay, do I have a motion? Michael?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to... Vice Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve change order number three to the construction contract in an amount up to $113,000 and a budget transfer in the amount of $500,000 for the Glassford Hill Road and Long Look Drive intersection improvement project, CIP S-379.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Diane, can you set the vote, please? Thank you.
That's unanimous, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Norm. Okay, next, we have item D, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign resolution number 1996 approving the 2017 Governor's Office of Highway Safety Buckle Up Arizona Enforcement Grant Contract, number 2017-CIOT-018, and accept the grant award. Deputy Chief?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council and staff. In preparation for talking about the Governor's Office of Highway Safety grant, I did some quick research online. Centers of Disease Control did a study in 2009, or about the year 2009. Out of 33,000 people killed in car crashes, more than half of them were not wearing a restraint when they were killed. So, it's extremely important that we do whatever we can to encourage our public to wear seat belts. It is proven by research that restraints are the number one best way to reduce or even eliminate injury in the case of a car crash. So, as you know, we routinely partner with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety to receive funding to do these kinds of enforcement activities that will improve the safety of our motoring public. So, your choice tonight is to accept an award of $3,000 from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, which we will use between May 22nd and June 4th to go out in our community to enforce seatbelt laws.
Questions?
No.
I think that's pretty clear. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I just had a question. We're not going to go out of our way to enforce that as opposed to when we have the opportunity to evaluate, I guess, infraction, that that would be one of the considerations.
Absolutely. What our officers will do is they will go out and enforce primary violations as a seatbelt violation is secondary. So, they will stop people for violations like speeding and stop signs and other things that will also hopefully improve motor vehicle safety.
Good question, Michael, thank you. Anyone else? Is it someone already hit the button?
It won't let us make a motion.
Started it.
I'll be happy to make the motion to authorize the mayor, in his absence, the Vice Mayor, to sign resolution 1996 approving 2017 Governor's Office of Highway Safety Buckle Up Arizona Enforcement Grant Contract, 2017-CIOT-018, and accept the grant award.
Jody?
Vice Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Diane, can you set the vote, please? Thank you.
That's unanimous. Also, Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, consideration of approving the amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated to provide professional design services for easement acquisition in the amount up to $22,674.21 for the Section 2 Sewer Upsizing Project, CIP number W-390. You're up again.
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for having me back. This isn't as fun of an item to discuss. It's a contract amendment for the Section 2 Sewer Upsizing Project, as you stated. This was a scope item that was added after the project was kicked off. Once we got into the design phase, we realized that we were going to need an additional 10 feet of easement to accommodate the parallel sewers that we were putting into Section 2. As you can see here, there's an existing 12-inch sewer line that runs from the southwest corner of Section 2 diagonally to the northeast corner, and we decided to actually keep that line in service and run an 18-inch parallel line roughly along the same alignment. So, it provides some redundancy for us for servicing and maintenance-ing both lines to have that structure in place. But, because of the disposition of the two lines and the spacing required between them, and the spacing that we require to properly maintain that line, we needed an additional 10 feet. So, as part of that process, we have to go through state land, and they have a number of items that have to be addressed as part of acquiring that easement. There's an environmental component, there's a cultural component, there's legal descriptions that have to be prepared, exhibits, applications. So, there's a significant amount of items that have to be addressed. So, we made the decision to go ahead and contract Civil Tech, who's already doing the design, and is very familiar with the project already, for those services. So, as you stated, the dollar amount is $22,674.21, and so we are requesting an amendment to the existing contract with Civil Tech.
Questions? Michael?
I know when we went on our little trip up Glassford Hill, that we talked about some of the acquisition of the state's property. So, they actually go through a process. We make a proposal, and they tell us what they feel the value of that easement will be, in this case, I guess, right? So, it's something they designated as an amount.
Well, that's a good question, and I should clarify that this dollar amount is just for professional services to satisfy the state law's process. This doesn't actually account for the dollar amount for purchasing the land itself, so...
Is that coming, or is...
That's coming, yeah.
Is there an exemption? Okay.
Yep.
So, we'll have to wait to see what that might be as well.
Right.
Okay.
In line with what Michael just asked, let everybody know that that land right now is vacant land, it's just sitting there empty, and it's just state land that we have to get the variances and licenses for and the easements. So, we're not going to be disturbing any homes or home values or anything like that. Just want to let everybody know.
Thank you.
Laura?
I have a question about the archaeology... Archaeological... Have they given you a timeframe of how quickly they'll move through that? Because that can sometimes be hold-up projects, and I'm hoping that won't hold this one up.
Well, yeah, we don't have a specific timeframe, but the rumor is that it can take a long time.
Yes.
So, that's why we're starting the process now. There actually currently isn't funding to go to construction for this project for the current fiscal year or the next fiscal year. So, we'd probably be seeing this for fiscal year, you know, 2018, 2019. But, we're starting the process now, and so that everything's in place, so when we have those funds, we can go to construction and already have the easement.
It's a long period of time off, and it's four or five years, and that's so frustrating. And you have no control, and I don't hold you responsible.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, I'd accept a motion.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll do it. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated to provide professional design services for easement acquisition in the amount up to $22,674.21 for the Section 2 Sewer Upsizing Project, CIP number W-390, by electronic vote.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Diane, can you set the vote, please?
That's unanimous, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number nine, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none. We come to our last item, and that's adjournment. Would anybody care to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd be very glad to make the motion to adjourn, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Vice Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Diane, could you set the vote, please?
That's unanimous, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight.